At this time, please place all electronic devices to vibrate. All electronic devices to vibrate. Will all non-council employees, all non-council employees, please leave the main floor of the chambers. There's additional seating upstairs in the balcony. Thank you.
Quiet in the chambers, please. Please close the doors. Everyone, please take a seat. Individuals in the balcony, please have a seat. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adams.
Present.
Barron.
Shh.
Borelli. Cabrera. Chin.
Here.
Cohen. Constantinides. Cornegey. Crowley. Combo. Deutsch. Drum.
Here.
Espinal.
Here.
Eugene. Ferraris Copeland. Grodnik.
Here.
Gentili.
I'm here.
Gibson. Greenfield. Gredenchik. Johnson.
Here.
Kalos.
Here.
King.
Present.
Koo.
Present.
Kozlowski. Lanzman. Lander. Levin. Levine.
Here.
Mizell. Mealy. Manchaca.
Presente.
Mendez. Miller. Palma. Perkins.
Here.
Reynoso. Richards.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose. Rosenthal.
Here.
Salamanca.
Present.
Torres.
Present.
Trager.
Here.
Ulrich.
Present.
Vaca. Valone. Williams. Mattio. Van Bramer. Van Bramer. Thank you. Okay. Mattio. Borelli. Barron. Speaker Mark Verberito.
Thank you. All quiet in the chambers. All rise for the invocation. The invocation will be delivered by Reverend Dr. Jac Andre de Graff, the associate pastor of the Great Canaan Baptist Church, 132 West 116th Street in the Village of Harlem.
To some, you are the Creator; to others, you are my higher power; but I come in the tradition of the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob on this afternoon, and we bow our heads and incline our ears and hearts to you just to say thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to serve in the great chamber of the greatest city in the world. We are reminded of the song that was sung by a young singer who said he's got the whole world in his hands. And on this day, as we face danger in Times Square, we are reminded of the dangers of being a democratic body in a mean and sin-sick world. We ask that Father God, that you would consider the men and women who serve here, remember who they are and where they came from, and remind them of what they came to do. Oh, Father God, we too want to salute and to recognize those whose career in this room are winding down. We appreciate their sacrifice and their service and their contributions. And while you're passing out blessings, Father God, we pause for one more request, and that is, in the tradition of this body, it has been more about deliberation and consideration. It has also been about setting an example, not just for New York, not just for the nation, but for the world that watches what we say and do in this room. And in that tradition, we have always been barrier breakers and precedent setters, and so we looked to Astoria at a time for leadership and saw an Itlo-American from Astoria, and then looked at Chelsea for a leadership, and we saw an Irish-American gay person for leadership. We looked to East Harlem, found a Latina, a voice, and a vibrant leadership. And so now, those who once sat in the back of the bus are looking for a coalition of courage that might join together to provide new leadership in 2018. But Father God, whatever you do and however you do it, we ask that you would bless this place with the sunshine of harmony and the melody of justice. Empower each person under the sound of my voice to remember whose they are and why they're here. We know that as they do these things, I am convinced and convicted that the best is yet to come. God bless you, and may God bless America.
Thank you. Amen. Please be seated. Quiet in the chambers, please. Quiet in the chambers. Motion to spread the invocation, Councilmember Perkins.
Where am I going? What am I supposed to do here? Am I supposed to say something?
Councilmember Perkins, if you don't mind.
So be it.
Yes. Councilmember Perkins, thank you. Reverend de Graff has been a leader and activist against gun violence, working with 100 black men and 1199 Hospital Workers Union. He's led historic delegation of African-American clergy on the Israeli mission of bridge-building and interfaith fellowship. He was honored by the State of Israel with its Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award, and he was the first Christian clergyman to serve as the Dr. King's keynote speaker at the New York synagogue. He spearheaded a clergy prayer vigil at the United Nations to protest the bloodshed in Dofor, and he was a featured speaker at the United Nations at its Commission on Violence Against Women. He was visited by Pope Benedict to attend the ecumenical prayer service during the papal visit, along with Christian and Orthodox leaders from across this country. We welcome him, and we thank him for that thoughtful prayer this afternoon. Thank you, Pastor. And now, motion to spread the adoption of minutes, Councilmember Cabrera. Motion that the minutes of the stated meeting of October 31st, 2017, be adopted and printed. Messages and papers from the mayor.
Pre-considered M. 562 submitting Ann Holford Smith for appointment to the Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Rules, privileges, and elections. Communication from city, county, and borough offices.
Pre-considered M. 563 Alameda Sky Chapman for recommendation to the youth board.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
M. 564 recommending Sylvia De Pietro to the Board of Elections.
Rules, privileges, and elections.
M. 565 submitting the certifications of the members of the city council.
Received, ordered, printed, and filed. Petitions and communications.
None.
Land use call-ups.
None.
Quiet in the chambers as we now hear from the Speaker, Melissa Mark Verberito. Thank you.
Give me one moment, please. So, good afternoon to everybody. And obviously, as we all heard and we discussed it at the ceremonial earlier today, this morning, there was an explosion at the Port Authority Bus Terminal. And on behalf of the entire council, I want to thank our first responders for acting so quickly and keeping our city safe as they do each and every day. We are deeply grateful for their commitment and the professionalism, and sure that lives were saved thanks to their quick action. We're also joined today by the Coro PB Youth Fellows. We welcome all of you to City Hall, and we thank you all for the support and participatory budgeting process. Are they sitting up in the balcony? Where are they at? All right. Welcome to the chamber. I also want to take a moment to just remember a couple of legendary New Yorkers that we lost this week: Maurice, Mickey Carroll, and James Hanley. Mickey was not only a renowned figure in New York politics and journalism, but a mentor to many who roam here in City Hall. James was a fearless leader, an extraordinary public servant, who proudly represented the hard-working laborers of our great city. And just taking a moment to just remember them. Thank you. And so we're going to jump right into our docket for the day. The council will begin by voting on a number of land use items. Introduction 1533A, sponsored by Councilmember Margaret Chin, would empower elected officials and their constituents with tools they need to advocate for zoning and land use policies in neighborhoods that are currently and were formerly designated urban renewal areas. Intro 1661A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Espinal, would require the city to establish a website on NYC.gov by July 1st of 2018 to promote commercial and community-based agricultural uses in the city of New York. And finally, the council will also vote on construction of a new school in Councilmember Manchaca's district. The council will next vote on one finance item, Intro 1737, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Saphieras Copeland and Councilmember James Vaca, that would establish the Morris Park Business Improvement District in the Bronx. For staff, I want to thank Latanya McKinney, Eric Bernstein, Rebecca Chason, and Aliyah Ali. Next, the council is going to vote on Intro 270, sponsored by Councilmember Annabelle Palma, which would permanently change the name of Two Thoroughfares in the borough of the Bronx to East 177th Street and amends the New York City map accordingly. Staff, I want to thank Jeffrey Baker, Chris Savatore, Patrick Mulvahill, Chima Obuchere, Kenneth Grace, and Jen Wilcox. Moving on, we will vote on Intro 1696A, sponsored by Councilmember James Vaca, which would require the creation of a task force that provides recommendations on how information on agency automated decision systems, otherwise known as algorithms, may be shared with the public. The task force would also provide recommendations on how agencies may address instances where people are harmed by agency automated decision systems. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Malaika Jabali, Patrick Mulvahill, and Sebastian Baki. Next, the council will vote on bills that require the reporting of information on the workforce of developers and contractors receiving funding from the city. Intro 1382B, sponsored by Councilmember Robert Cornegey, would require certain contractors employed to work on city-funded construction projects to disclose to an agency designated by the mayor the zip code of their employee's primary address. This bill would also create record-keeping requirements for such contractors and would give the authority to enforce the provisions of this bill to the designated agency. Intro 752C, sponsored by public advocate Tish James, would require contractors employed to work on city-funded construction projects to disclose certain information regarding the demographics of employees working on those projects in addition to other administrative information. Staff, I want to thank Jeff Baker, Jen Wilcox, Terza Nazar, Rachel Cordero, Sylvester Yovana, Alex Polenoff, Nadia Johnson, Casey Addison, Michael Kurtz, Nicole Abin, Eric Bernstein, and Matt Carlin. Moving on, we will vote on Intro 1651A, sponsored by Councilmember Costa Constantinidis, which would require the Department of Citywide Administrative Services to provide an annual report on electricity and fossil fuel use in certain city-owned buildings, including identifying whether such buildings have been fitted with equipment for monitoring energy usage in near real time. Staff, I want to thank Jeffrey Baker, Samara Swanson, Nadia Johnson, and Jonathan Seltzer. Next, the council will vote on Intro 1062A, sponsored by Councilmember Margaret Chin, which would require that by January 1st, 2019, the Administration for Children's Services would produce a study regarding its ability to provide access to language classes for foster care children whose parents are limited English proficient, in order to ensure that children temporarily removed from their homes never lose the ability to communicate with their parents. Want to thank Jeffrey Baker, Andrea Vasquez, Tanya Cyrus, and Daniel Croup. We will also vote on bills sponsored by Councilmember Vinnie Gentili. Introduction 1618A would require annual public outreach campaigns to educate the public on how to identify and submit complaints regarding different forms of government corruption, fraud, and waste. And Intro 1633A would require that whenever practicable, DOI must complete a vendor name check of a prospective vendor for a city contract 30 days prior to the commencement of the contract between the city agency and the vendor. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Josh Kingsley, and Sheila Johnson. Also, we will vote on Intro 1764A, sponsored by Councilmember Barry Gredenchik, which would increase the assessed value limitation for eligibility of J-51 improvements to $32,000 per dwelling unit and would increase each year by the cost of living adjustment percentage. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Megan Chen, Jose Conde, Sarah Gastelum, and Jen Wilcox. We'll also vote on Intro 1241A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Espinal, which would require diaper-changing stations in assembly and mercantile occupancies for both male and female occupants. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Megan Chen, Jose Conde, Sarah Gastelum, and Jen Wilcox. Council will also vote on a couple of NYPD reporting bills. Intro 1611A, sponsored by Councilmember Richie Torres, would require the NYPD to report on a quarterly basis the number of index crimes by borough where at least one person has been arrested and charged with the commission of the offense. And Introduction 1664A, sponsored by Councilmember Rory Lanzman, which would require the NYPD to report on a quarterly basis the number of theft of services arrests and fare evasion offenses returnable to the Transit Adjudication Bureau, disaggregated by age of the offender, arrestee, subway station in which the offense took place, the Transit Bureau of the offense, and, in the case of a criminal enforcement, whether the individual was issued a desk-appearance ticket or whether the arrestee was processed through central booking. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Deepa Ambakar, Casey Addison, and Steve Reister. Since the definitions of sexual orientation and gender in the city's human rights law were drafted, society has evolved its understanding of sexual orientation, gender, and gender identity. Therefore, the council will vote on Intro 1186A, sponsored by Councilmember Danny Drum, which would update the language in the human rights law to better capture the current understanding of sexual orientation and gender, recognizing that sexual orientation ranges along a continuum. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Zee Emanuel-Hailu, Deepa Ambakar, and Rachel Cordero. We will also be voting on Intro 1670AB, sponsored by Councilmember Peter Kuehl, which would expand the definition of harassment to include threats based on a person's actual or perceived status in a protected class, including threats to report immigrant tenants to ICE. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Megan Chen, Jose Conde, Indiana Porta, Zee Emanuel-Hailu, Sarah Gastelum, and Jen Wilcox. And finally, in September, the city was stunned as a student was fatally stabbed and another critically wounded by a fellow student at a school in the Bronx. Early reports indicated that the student who allegedly committed the act is a victim of bullying. The council immediately acted by holding an oversight hearing to examine DOI's efforts to address bullying in city schools and introducing legislation to increase transparency about the DOI's policies. Intro 1538A, sponsored by Education Committee Chair Danny Drum, would require the Department of Education to post on its website information regarding how to report incidents of bullying, harassment, intimidation, or discrimination, including on each school's website, the contact information for the school's Dignity Act coordinator. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Paul Senegal, Smita Deshmuk, Andrea Vasquez, and Terza Nazar. And Intro 1757A, sponsored by Councilmember Mark Trager, would require the DOI to report every six months on the number of material incidents of student-to-student bullying, harassment, intimidation, or discrimination in violation of Chancellor's Regulation A832, and to annually report on a support that DOI provides to school in an effort to prevent bullying incidents. Want to thank Jeff Baker, Smita Deshmuk, Andrea Vasquez, and Terza Nazar. And that completes the highlights of today's docket. I look forward to proceeding with today's votes, and I especially look forward to seeing everyone tonight at the council's holiday party. This will be a particularly bittersweet holiday season for me as I say goodbye to all of the New York City Council. Serving as Speaker these past four years and having the opportunity to work with all of you to help make the city a better, fairer place have been two of the most... Having served as Speaker for these past four years and having the opportunity to work with all of you to help make the city a better, fairer place had been two of the most rewarding experiences of my career, and I couldn't be more proud of all the great work that we've accomplished together. In addition to passing legislation and championing policies that have helped bring greater equality, justice, and fairness to all of our communities, we've successfully advocated for a budget year after year that's more inclusive of all New Yorkers and that addresses some of our city's most urgent needs. And we've consistently stood up for what's right because that is who we are as a city and who we are as a city council. So my thanks to each and every one of you, and I'm excited to celebrate all of our accomplishments with all of you tonight. And before I close, just got word here that Councilmember Adrian Adams' family welcomes a grandson today: Micah Ryan. So congratulations to you, Councilmember. And with that, I end communication from the Speaker.
Congratulations, Grandma. General orders, seeing none. Report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Civil Rights, Intro 1186A, amending the definitions of sexual orientation and gender.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Contracts, Intro 752C, construction projects.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Education, Intro 1486A, DOI reporting.
Amended and laid over.
Intro 1538A and Intro 1757A, school bullying reporting.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Environmental Protection, Intro 1651A, electricity and fossil fuel usage.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Intro 1737, Morris Park bid.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Intro 1783, commercial rent tax.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 826 and RESO 1763, and LU 827 and RESO 1764, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on General Welfare, Intro 1062A, foster care study.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 1241A, diaper-changing accommodations.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1678B, amending the definition of harassment.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1764A, J-51 benefit eligibility.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, Intro 1533A, and Intro 1661A, urban renewal plans and agriculture website.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered RESO 1761, Restore New York Communities Initiative.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 785 and RESO 1765, and LU 786 and RESO 1766, Harlem River Waterfront District.
Approved and modifications and coupled on general orders.
LU 800 to LU 817 on page seven, various applications.
Approved and modifications and refer to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Rule 11.70B of the Rules of the Council and Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
LU 825 and RESO 1767, UDAP Queens.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 828 and RESO 1768, and pre-considered LU 829 and RESO 1769, property tax exemptions.
Approved and laid over.
Pre-considered LU 830 and RESO 1770, Primary School, Council District 38.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Oversight and Investigations, Intro 1618A, DOI reporting.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 1633A, city vendor name checks.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 270, renaming Two Thoroughfares in Public Places.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Intro 1611A and 1664A, Police Department Reports.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, pre-considered M. 562 and RESO 1771, approving the appointment of Ann Holford Smith, Landmarks Preservation Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered M. 563 and RESO 1772, approving the recommendation of Alameda Sky Chapman Youth Board.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Small Business, Intro 1382B, Workforce Reporting.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Technology, Intro 1696A, Automated Decision Systems.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
On the General Order Calendar, Intro 1465A, Residual Fuel, Oil, and City Power Plants.
Laid over.
RESO Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and I ask for a roll call vote on all coupled general order items. Beginning with Councilmember Ulrich.
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate. I ask for unanimous consent to vote on all land use items and all matters on the General Order Calendar.
Yes.
I vote aye, and I just want to give a special shout-out to my grandmother, Rosemary, who's here with me today.
Oh, nice. God bless her.
She was with me nine years ago on the day that Councilmember Ferraris and I, along with Kenny Mitchell, were sworn in, and she's still here, so I love you and thank you for being here today. Thank you, Madam Public Advocate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adams.
I vote aye.
Barron.
I vote aye.
Borelli.
I on all accept land use 817, 752C, 1382B, and 1678.
Cabrera.
Aye.
Chin.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I urge my colleague to vote for Intro 1062A and 1533A, and I congratulate all my colleagues on their land use and legislation. I wanted to thank Speaker Melissa Mark Verberito for her support on these legislation. Thank Councilmember Steve Levin, Chair of the General Welfare Committee, and Councilmember David Greenfield, Chair of the Land Use Committee, for their leadership on these bills. And I also want to thank staff: Ramon Martinez, Andrea Vasquez, Raju Manjuli, Lubin, Jeff Campagna, my Land Use Director Roxanne Early, and my Deputy Chief of Staff Vincent Thang for all their hard work on these two important legislation, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Cohen. Constantinides.
Madam Public Advocate, may I be allowed to explain my vote?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to ask my colleagues to support Intro 1651A, which would require DECAST to provide annual report. annual report.
Councilmember, excuse us. Could we have quiet in the chambers, please? Thank you.
I'd like to ask my colleagues to support 1651A, which would require de-cast to provide an annual report on electricity and fossil fuel use in certain city buildings, including identifying whether such buildings have been fitted with equipment for monitoring energy use in near real time. This report would require assessments and improvements to building envelopes, but also require de-cast in conjunction with other agencies to coordinate the installation of energy usage equipment and any software in city buildings that de-cast identifies as appropriate for such installation. I want to thank our Speaker, Melissa Marc-Viverito, our Committee Counselors, Mara Swannston, Ed Atkins, Intern Ryan Moser, for all their work on this bill, as well as de-cast. And of course, my Legislative Director, Nick Wazowski. Thank you, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Carnegie.
Madam Public Advocate, may I have permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I encourage all of my colleagues to sign on to and vote for Intro 1382B, which will require contractors employed to work on city-funded construction sites to report the demographic information of persons employed on the work site, including hourly rate of payment and zip code or primary residence, so we can be sure city funds are benefiting all New Yorkers. This information will add much-needed accountability to the awarding of large contracts to developers who promise a diverse workforce, and will ensure that we in government are making our commitment to create a fair and equitable city for all New Yorkers. I'd like to thank Speaker Melissa Marc-Viverito, Terza Nasser, Asia Schomburg, Committee Counsel Sylvester Yovanna, Policy Analyst Michael Kurtz, Fiscal Policy Analyst Aliya Ali, and my staff for all their work on this bill, and I would like to extend an extra special thanks to Bertha Lewis of the Black Institute and Hazel Dukes of the New York State NAACP, without whose advocacy this bill would not be as strong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Combo.
I'm sorry, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Councilmember Combo.
Aye on all. Thank you.
Deusch.
No on 1186, and aye on the rest.
Drum.
Aye on all.
Espinal.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
Yeah, I just really want to highlight the two bills that I'm passing today. One is Intro 1661A, and this will require the City of New York to create a website in its NYC.gov portal dedicated to urban farming. So it will be an informational hub for commercial farmers and also community gardens to know what are the rules and regulations the city has in place, and this also, I believe, will help spur urban gardening, because it will incentivize people to go out there and start growing their fruits and vegetables. It's only a first step. I know there's a lot more work that needs to be done. I'm dedicated and committed to doing that in the new coming session. Second is a bill that will require diaper-changing stations in all public restrooms. It's a bill I introduced with my colleague Dan Garodnik, and something I'm very proud of, after seeing a father actually changing his daughter's diaper on top of a public bathroom sink. So just imagine, you have hundreds of people washing their hands after using the restroom, going to use that sink, but then you also have someone changing their child's diaper in that sink. So I hope this is a bill that also will benefit all of our young parents in the council, and Laurie Combo just had a child, and Antonio Reynoso is also having a child in the next few months, and hopefully they can use this for their families. So thank me later, and all New Yorkers as well. I hope this benefits all parents across the city. So I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Eugene.
I want to vote on all the land use call-ups, and also I vote aye.
Thank you.
Garodnik.
Thank you. I vote aye. Congratulations to all, and particularly Councilmember Espinal. I think that's a great, great thing for dads and all families. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Jen Tilly.
Aye on all.
Gibson.
With my warmest congratulations to all of our colleagues, especially Councilmember Espinal. Thank you so much. I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greenfield.
Special congratulations to Councilmembers Chen and Espinal on their outstanding land use legislation. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Gordentchik.
Yes, aye on all, with the exception of preconsidered Reso 1761. I abstain on that.
Thank you.
Johnson.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Kalos.
Aye on all.
King.
Congratulations to everyone who's passing legislation today. I vote aye on all, except for Intro 1186A. I abstain.
Thank you.
Koo.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Kozlowski.
I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Lansman.
Aye.
Lander.
Aye on all.
Levin.
Aye on all.
Levine.
Aye on all.
Mizell.
Menchaca.
Aye on all.
Madam Public Advocate, permission to...
Take it easy.
Yeah. You grant me all land use and call-ups.
Okay. Thank you. Watch that back.
Palmer.
Mizell.
Yes.
Yes.
Perkins.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Reynoso.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
I want to acknowledge that Lacy Tauber, my Legislative Director, will be leaving the council today as her last day, and she will be joining the dark side and HPD. I'll reference, next weekend, Star Wars will be coming out. You guys should all go watch it. Lacy Tauber dons the same initials as the great Lawrence Taylor of the New York Football Giants, and they have many things in common, these two. They aggressively pursue their goals, in this case, passing laws for Lacy Tauber, no matter who is in front of them. While she may be deterred at times, trust me, she persists, and I want to thank her for everything she has done to enhance my office and continue to help me pass legislation in this time. She has been a great employee and staff member, and now that she will be leaving me, I want to acknowledge the great friend that she also has been in my office. I am proud that Lacy Tauber has been in my office for the last four years and has helped me achieve my goals and the many accomplishments that I have. I'm very proud of her and wish her the best at HPD. They have a superstar with them now. So thank you again, Lacy, for everything you've done for me, and I want to thank Rafa Espinal for the changing tables that I will soon be using, and I vote aye on all.
Thank you.
Richards.
Vote aye, and thank you, Espinal, for looking out for us forgotten dads. Thank you.
Oh.
Donovan, too.
The men who get it.
Rodriguez.
Aye on all.
Rose.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
Aye on all. Congratulations to Lacy Tauber. Lacy, we are all going to miss you. It's one of those things where I'm happy for you and very sad for me, and I want to especially thank Councilmember Chin for carrying legislation that will help in all of our districts when it comes to land use decision-making. It was an incredibly important bill, and I know it will be important for the Upper West Side. Thank you.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Thank you.
Torres.
Aye on all, except land use item 817.
Traeger.
Permission to explain my vote?
Yes.
Public Advocate, I'd like to speak about my bill that we're voting on today, Intro 1757. We have seen, especially in recent months, how bullying leads to tragic consequences. Several New Yorkers have lost their lives because of incidents rooted in bullying. As a former teacher, I know firsthand the physical, emotional, and psychological impact that bullying can have on students. With the rise of social media, bullying has taken on new forms, and it is likelier than ever to spill out of the school campus and into the home lives of students. My bill will help us learn how bullying begins, where bullying persists, and whether or not schools have enough resources and are utilizing them properly. My bill also examines if schools are effectively informing parents and guardians of bullying incidents involving their children, and will also make sure parents and guardians are involved in the process every step of the way. I'd like to thank Speaker Melissa Marc-Viverito, Education Chair Danny Drum, the Education Committee, the great staff, Smita Deschmook, Rob Newman, my Chief of Staff, Anna Skae, my Policy Director, Vanessa Ogul, and all of my colleagues who have expressed support on this important issue, and I ask you all to please vote yes, and I vote aye on all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vaca.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank the council for voting for 1696, my bill about algorithms, and I want to thank especially the members of the Technology Committee, which I chair, and my staff, Zach Hecht, and all the members of the council staff. We are increasingly governed by technology, and the data that goes into algorithms that makes decisions for you and I is not at all transparent at this point and not at all accountable to our oversight here at the council. My legislation creates a mayoral task force that must report during the next council on what they propose to do, agency by agency, to make that information more available, to make it transparent, and how we can oversee the use of data that goes into algorithms, and how people who dispute the findings can have a recourse to take action and appeal should there be a government decision that they don't agree with. We're the first city in this country to enact legislation like this, because it's kind of wonky, it's kind of complex, but it's something that we have to put our arms around, and we have to do it soon. The public will demand nothing less than that in the days ahead. So this is groundbreaking legislation. New York City leads the way once again. I'm proud of all the work that went into this, and I hope that the next council will put on their oversight hat and make sure that agency by agency is held accountable, makes the reports that are needed, and that we have a comprehensive approach to data, algorithms, and all that goes with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Williams.
Aye on all.
Mattio.
No on 752, 1382, 1678, aye on the rest.
Thank you.
Van Bramer.
Aye on all.
Speaker Marc-Viverito.
Want to thank all of you for voting for 752. It will go a long way, making sure that our city-funded construction industry is both diverse and represents the best developers and contractors in the city of New York, and I thank all of you for your support. And are all the fellows up in the balcony women? No? One guy? Where the gentleman at? There you go, one gentleman. Two, very good. Very good. Proud of you. Thank you. All items on today's general order calendar were adopted by a vote of 46 in the affirmative, zero negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Intro 752C, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, two negative, and zero abstentions, and Intro 1382B, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, two negative, and zero abstentions, and Intro 1678B, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, two negative, and zero abstentions, and Intro 1186A, which was adopted by a vote of 44 in the affirmative, one negative, and one abstention, and Resolution 1761, which was adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, zero negative, and one abstention, and that's it for the agenda. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to the committee as indicated on the agenda.
Thank you. We have no resolutions today. We'll go immediately to general discussion, beginning with Councilmember Gredentchik. Oh, my goodness. Happy holiday. Councilmember Williams will not waive his right to speak.
You are correct, Madam Public Advocate.
Shh. Quiet in the chambers.
I will be brief, though. Obviously, I want to continue to say my prayers for those, for anyone who made it today, and thank the all men and women for their response today. I do want to talk about two things. The Speaker had a bill that we passed dealing with...
Councilmember Williams has the floor. Please be quiet.
Dealing with concealed carry and licenses. We do know, excuse me, that concealed carry has passed at least one house, which is extremely dangerous. As we've known, the Congress has been unable to pass legislation after attacks, and we see now that they can very well pass legislation when it comes to guns, as long as they are making this country more dangerous. It just seems unwieldy that they won't even look at what's happening here in New York City. We are now the safest city, big city, in the country. We have a long way to go, but we've moved so far, and to not look at what's happening here and try to make us less safe is just a crazy thing, and I hope to continue to push back. I thank the Congress people who have been supporting, pushing back, and hopefully this body will continue to speak louder. I do want to just say I was moved with the conviction and sentencing of Walter Scott, the officer that killed him. It is not enough that we actually see officers being held accountable, and it actually made me a little terry, because I speak about Black Lives Matter, but very often you see on the news that it doesn't. And this was one time that doesn't happen often enough. We saw someone being held accountable, and I hope that is something that reverberates across the country. It will go a long way into moving in a direction we want to continue moving. Last but not least, I want to thank Councilmember King for bringing us all together on the steps today, and we should all be pushing against, will soon be firefighter Casano, for the words that he, the words of hate that he's been known to tweet from time to time repeatedly against Jews, against blacks. I kept thinking that if he was one of the responders today, and he had to make a split second decision, and he saw Yamaka, and he saw Star David, or he saw black skin, what decision would that be? So I hope us as a body continue to push back in this administration not to have him hired.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
I rise, and I'd be short. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came out this morning to denounce what FDNY has done by hiring someone who stands against everything that we fight for and what we've advocated against since the last four years in this council. So it is a slap in the face to the great work that this council has done for one of our agencies in FDNY to think it's okay to hire the poster child that represents bigotry and hatred. So we'll be calling on the mayor and everyone else, and all of you have received letters from me. We're asking you to make sure that we get that letter signed, that we can get it to the commissioner and the mayor, urging them to remove this individual from ever-serving New Yorkers, since he can't seem to figure out how to show love or find love, and it's out for New Yorkers. And again, it's been a real honor and a pleasure working with everyone this legislative season. Thank you, and happy holidays again.
Thank you. And lastly, Councilmember Greenfield.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to take just a minute to recognize that my counsel, Elena Sacheva, is, this is her last stated meeting, and she will also be joining HPD as the Deputy Chief of Staff. She's done fantastic work in my office for the last couple of years, especially around MIA, HCQA, and all of the land use issues and legislative issues in my office. I wanted to thank her for her work and recognize her outstanding contribution to the city of New York, and to wish her well at HPD, where I'm sure she'll continue to be an outstanding public servant. Thank you very much, and I wish everybody a happy Hanukkah this week.
Councilmember Traeger.
Thank you, Public Advocate. Colleagues, I'd please bring to your attention the bill I'm introducing today in the council, Intro 1790. It's no secret that our PTAs are not as equitable as they should be, and we must make sure that all of our students have equal opportunities across the board. Your zip code should not determine your number of opportunities. My bill will offer much-needed transparency over our parent associations and parent-teacher associations. My bill would require the DOE to report information annually regarding PAs and PTAs, including the number of parents registered and attending, the frequency of meetings, and the annual income of the PTAs, noting fundraising activities, and the annual expenditures. There is no secret that in certain neighborhoods in our city, there is greater capacity to raise a lot more resources than other areas in New York City, and I want to make sure that our students, regardless of where you live, what zip code you're in, that you're receiving a level playing field. So my bill would offer more transparency with regards to PAs and PTA processes and help even the playing field for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And without objection, we reopen the vote for Councilmember Crawley. How do you vote?
Thank you, Madam Public Advocate.